You're ready, okay.
I'm gonna start with this.
All right, let's call the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, July ninth, two thousand twenty-five to order. Would you call the roll, please?
Buranski.
Here.
Spivey.
Here.
Selfie. Honey.
Here.
I'm Spiler.
Here.
Monahan. And Rosenbaum.
Yeah. Okay, we do have a quorum, twenty-five Z dash two thousand four, public comment. Anyway, anybody wanna speak in public comment? Awesome, nobody wanted to come up and talk, perfect. All right, approval of minutes, twenty-five Z dash two thousand five, approval of minutes for the regular meeting of May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve them.
A motion to approve, we have a second.
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, Benny Carey. Unfinished business, twenty-five B dash zero-two, finding a fact, reading of the finding of facts, on request for variance to reduce the west front setback to ten feet to allow for the preferred placement of a new single-family residence facing Bridge Street at nine oh six Bridge Street. Conclusion, in applying the regulations and the Britain and performance standards of the zoning ordinance to this particular case, the following conclusions are reached. The subject property is located in a low-density residential zoning district on Bridge Street. The applicant seeks a variance to reduce the west front setback to ten feet to allow preferred placement of new single-family residence facing Bridge Street. Determination, based upon the facts of this case, the zoning board of appeals does find and conclude that the request by Melissa Hammer for a variance to reduce the west front setback to allow for the preferred placement of a single, new, single-family residence facing Bridge Street, be approved for the following reasons. Variance is not a right, it may be granted to an applicant only if the applicant establishes that the strict adherence to this code will result in practical difficulties or undue hardship because of site characteristics that are not applicable to most properties in the same zoning district. Such variance shall be granted only when the applicant establishes that all the following criteria are as applicable, are satisfied. One, hardship unique to the property, not self-inflicted, it is not unique to the property, it is not self-inflicted. Special privilege, it is not. Little interpretation, yes, it does, little reinterpretation of the provision of this regulation would deprive the applicant's right to commonly enjoy by other properties in the same zoning district and would work unnecessary and undue hardship with the applicant. Reasonable use, the applicant and the owner of the property cannot derive a reasonable use of the property without the request variance, it does demonstrate a reasonable use. Minimum necessary, the variance is a minimum necessary to make possible the reasonable use of the land or structures, which is yes. Compatible adjacent properties, variance not be injurious to, or reduce the value of the adjacent properties, or improvements are detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. On granting a variance, the decision-maker may impose conditions deemed necessary to protect the affected property owners and to protect the intent of the code, yes, it is applicable. Conformist with the purpose of the code, it does not conflict, and conformist with a comprehensive plan, it is in conformance. Decision on calendar number twenty-five B dash zero-two now therefore be resolved, the zoning board of appeals has determined that this request for Melissa Hammer for a variance to reduce the west front setback to ten feet to allow for the preferred placement of a new single-family residence facing Bridge Street be approved. Entertain a motion.
I'll move.
I have a second.
I'll make a second.
Need to call the roll for this Joe. Call the roll, please.
Honey.
Yes.
I'm Spiler.
Yes.
Buranski.
Yes.
Spivey.
Yes.
Rosenbaum.
Yes. Okay, next is two of them, there's twenty-five B dash zero-three and twenty-five B dash zero-four, finding a fact, reading of the finding of facts, the request for a variance reduces side and rear setbacks, and a variance reduce the minimum landscape surface ratio to allow for a detached, single-car garage at the rear of a principal structure at one oh nine North Ben Street. So... Conclusions, applying the regulations pertinent performance standards of the zoning ordinance to this particular case, the following conclusions are reached. The subject property is located in a low-density residential zoning district on Bridge Street. The applicant seeks a variance to reduce the west front setback, long one, guys.
Ben Street.
Yep. I thought this was easier than. That's what happens when we take a month off. Okay, conclusions, applying the regulations and the pertinent performance standards of the zoning ordinance to this particular case, the following conclusions are reached. Subject property is located in a low-density residential zone district on North Ben Street. The applicant seeks a variance to reduce the side and rear setback to allow for a detached, single-car accessory structure to the rear of the principal structure. Free, the applicant seeks a variance to reduce the minimum landscape surface ratio to allow for detached, single-car accessory structure to rear the principal property. Determination on twenty-five B dash three, based upon the facts of this case, the zoning board of appeals does find and conclude that the request by Debbie Panagopoulos for a variance to reduce the side and rear setback to allow for attached, detached, single-car accessory structure to the rear of the principal structure be approved for the following reasons. Variance is not a right, may be granted to an applicant only if the applicant establishes that the strict adherence to this code would result in principal difficult, practical difficulties, or undue hardships because of site characteristics that are not applicable to most properties in the same zoning district. Such variance shall be granted only when the applicant establishes that all the following criteria as applicable are satisfied. Hardship unique to the property, not self-inflicted, it is unique. Special privileges, it is not receiving any special privileges. Little interpretation, little interpretation is a provision of the regulations should deprive the applicant the right of common, rights commonly enjoyed by the properties in the same zone district and would work unnecessary and undue hardship on the applicant, which is yes. Reasonable use, it demonstrates a reasonable use. Minimum necessary, which is yes. Compatible adjacent property, which is also yes. Conformist with the purpose of the code, it would not conflict, and conformist with a comprehensive plan, it is in conformance. So entertain a motion. So on, decision on twenty-five B dash zero-three, now therefore be resolved, the zoning board of appeals has determined that this request by Debbie Panagopoulos for a variance to reduce the side and rear setbacks to allow for detached, single-car accessory structure to the rear of the principal structure be approved. Now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Honey.
Yes.
Buranski.
Yes.
Spivey.
Yes.
I'm Spiler.
Yes.
Rosenbaum.
Yes. Twenty-five B dash zero-four, based upon the facts of this case, the zoning board of appeals does find and conclude that the request by Debbie Panagopoulos for a variance to reduce the minimum landscape surface ratio to allow for a detached, single-car accessory structure to the rear of the principal structure be approved for the following reasons. Variance is not a right, may be granted to an applicant only if the applicant establishes that the strict adherence to this code will result in practical difficulties or undue hardships because of the site characteristics that are not applicable to most properties in the same zoning district. Such variance shall be granted only when the applicant establishes that all the following criteria as applicable are satisfied. Hardship unique to the property, not self-inflicted, it is unique. Special privilege, this is not, this is not grant them a special privilege. Little interpretation, the little interpretation of the provision of the regulations would deprive the applicant's right commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district and would unnecessary and undue hardship to the applicant, which would deprive them. Reasonable use, it demonstrates a reasonable use. Minimum necessary, which is yes. Compatible with adjacent properties, which is also yes. Conformist with the purpose of this code, it is in conformance, and in conformance with the comprehensive plan, it is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So, decision on twenty-five B dash zero-four, now therefore be resolved, the zoning board of appeals has determined that this request by Debbie Panagopoulos for a variance to reduce the minimum landscape surface ratio to allow for a detached, single-car accessory structure to the rear of the principal, principal structure be approved. Would you call the roll, or do I need a motion?
I move to approve twenty-five B dash zero-four.
All right, second. Got a second, would you call the roll, please?
Honey.
Yes.
I'm Spiler.
Yes.
Buranski.
Yes.
Spivey.
Yes.
Rosenbaum.
Yes. Way too much reading. All right, new business, twenty-five B dash zero-five. This will be a public hearing, owner and applicant Brian and Rosa Templey request for a variance to reduce the front setback of existing non-conforming, single-family home to allow for the construction of a front porch. So I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. You wanna swear them all at one time?
Sure.
So anyone who's gonna speak in any one of these three public hearings, would you raise your hands, and Mr. Knack will swear you in.
Try to settle the truth, the whole truth, and then ask about the truth. Thank you.
And that lasts for twenty-four hours? Okay, now entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move to reopen the public hearing.
I have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor say the five are saying aye. All those opposed, Benny Carey. All right, whoever's here to speak on twenty-five B dash five, wanna come forward?
The applicant is not here.
The applicant.
I can give a brief rundown if you want.
You go ahead and do it.
Okay, so the distance from the roadside to the, from the house is twenty-two feet, it is a non-conforming front setback, it's not in the historic district, and they want basically to do a six-foot porch and pull their front setback to accommodate for that, and then the front setback, if approved, would be from the edge of the, the six feet from the house to the roadside, or to the property, correction.
If you, if you were to look, I'd say the parking lot of the, the old hospital, that's about the same distance from the parking lot to the street as what this would be. If not, that might be even a little bit more, wouldn't it?
Approximately.
Yeah, 'cause I was looking at that the other day when I went by, so. I mean, to me, it's gonna make the property look better, and they're sticking money in to fix that place up, so I don't see any reason why we would improve it, but that's my opinion.
So right now, the, the, it looks like it's a little over eight and a half feet from the property line to the front of the house.
Well, hang on here, you're still in the public hearing.
Yeah, and we're asking questions again.
Oh, okay, does that, that's what I was, I just wanna clarify, so we're, we're, we're at eight and a half feet roughly to the property line to the front of the house.
It's closer to ten, my understanding was.
Okay, oh, okay.
We, we got something from Leifker.
I'm just looking at this here. It says eight point six nine feet from the property line to the front of the house, and we've taken up six of the porch, I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page.
It was closer to ten, we did get it from Leifker.
Oh, you did?
The.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, all right.
And then if, from the road to the porch would be about that sixteen feet, roughly.
And clarify, the building is not in the historic district.
Correct, it is not.
Okay.
Is that a vacant house right now?
There's no one living there, no.
That's what I mean, instead, they're redoing the house.
Yes.
That's all the questions I have.
Any other questions?
You said with a six-foot porch, that, is that like a standard size porch?
It's not disproportionately.
Yeah.
Large for the home, it seems. It fit in nice.
Let me, I think it's nice, somebody's doing something with the porch.
So, that's, that's all the questions that, that I don't remember.
I have, anybody else, Bill, you got any questions? Okay, no other questions, there was no one here to speak, or against it, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say the five by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, Benny Carey. All right, on twenty-five B dash zero-five, owner applicant Brian and Rosa Templey request for a variance to reduce the front setback of existing, non-conforming, single-family home to allow the construction of a front porch. Entertain a motion.
I'll move that, we direct Jonathan to draft a positive finding of fact for calendar number twenty-five B dash zero-five.
Okay, go to second.
I'll second that.
I'm gonna go to the criteria. First of all, I'll just say that, from my perspective, visiting the site, first of all, I don't know if you noticed, but those two houses that are next to each other are on one lot, which is really unusual, so.
Has to be same owner then, right?
It is same owner, and there's nothing across the street, and it's a really nice neighborhood up there, and I, I mean, I've always liked it, but, and that, that house, it's gotta be from eighteen eighty or ninety or something, it's, it's a pretty old house, it looks. And there's so many examples of houses that are kinda close, and this is one of those things where, you know, a six-foot porch, that's like the minimum porch, that's really kind of usable, where you can sit there, people can walk past you and stuff. That's about what you would, like the, the, the minimum porch you'd wanna do, so I think it's probably the right size, and I just don't think it affects anyone else up there, and I think it helps the house.
It's gonna help the, the looks of the home, I think, and like I say, I've had houses, I don't remember the last person that lived in it.
I don't think it, it alters the effect on the road and traffic, it's already a little close.
It's already.
This is everything in Galena, but, so I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah, I drove up to like, up near Elk Street, up in that area, and then kinda, and you, and you look, you know, like when you're coming down the hill there, by going down to Elk from the cemetery, and the houses are, you know, I mean, they're like, you know, they're five feet from the road, you know, so it's just, it just happens here in Galena, and so.
They built the houses, then they put the roads in.
Yeah, this is the right, this is the right tool to use for this.
And although they're planting a deck off the back, the back, topographically, is severe drop.
Pretty steep, yeah.
And so, hence the need for a front porch, if you're gonna do something, you know, in one side of the house or the other.
So I'm gonna go through the criteria, so number one is whether the, the hardship is unique to the property, not self-inflicted. It's definitely not self-inflicted, and I, I would say it is unique to the property, as though it's unique to many properties in Galena, but it is unique to this one. Does not, number two, does it confer a, a special privilege on this owner denied by others, no, it does not confer special privilege. There's a little interpretation of the, of the regulations of the code, would work unnecessary and undue hardship, I think it would, actually. Is the applicant asking for, or reasonable use, is the applicant, the owner cannot derive a reasonable use, and I think that a reasonable use of porch is a reasonable use, and I think that without the variance, they cannot derive that. Is it the minimum necessary, I would argue that it is definitely the minimum necessary at six feet. Is it compatible with adjacent properties, variance will not be injurious to or reduce the value of adjacent property, so yes, I would say it's compatible with adjacent properties. Seven is in conformance with the purposes of this code, I, I believe that the granting of variance will not conflict with the purposes of this code, so it is in conformance, and number eight, is it in conformance with the comprehensive plan, I would argue that it is.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to send a positive finding of fact, would you call the roll, please?
Honey.
Yes.
I'm Spiler.
Yes.
Buranski.
Yes.
Spivey.
Yes.
Rosenbaum.
Yes. Okay, the next is twenty-five B dash six, it's a public hearing, owner applicant, applicant. Nick and Jessica Timber request for a variance to reduce the sets, the side setback and the minimum building separation of two for a new detached garage from six, or ten to six. So this is a public hearing, so I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, Benny Carey. Nick, you wanna come forward? State your name and address for the record, please.
Nick Timberman, Six O Eight South Bench. So, what we're proposing to do is put foundation in and parking for Six O Eight South Bench on the empty lot. And side setback, it's ten foot. I believe the drawing there was drawn at four foot, probably three years ago, so I don't know when the ten foot came into effect, or if they didn't even figure that out, 'cause I didn't know about it at that time. MSA drew the plans up for me. So, after laying it out at ten foot, my garage would be more like twenty foot long in order to give me enough room to turn around and to pull out on Ben Street. So, I'm asking if I can move another four feet closer rather than ten feet, go to six foot, which would still allow for scaffolding or anything to work on the neighbor's house. And it would give me that extra four foot to where, like, make the garage a little bit larger, or parking area, and be able to back out of the garage and turn and drive onto bench.
So it's the back out?
Yeah.
Nick, does your property go right up to the, the house?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Nick, you called it an empty lot, but it's just, it's part of your lot.
Yes, there was two, there was two lots with that property.
There, there were two lots, so that, that property at Six O Eight that you've been fixing up?
Yeah.
That vacant lot was, was literally, was a separate lot?
It was, yeah.
Okay, but it's shown in here, is it, did you consolidate that, Nick?
It's been consolidated for years, I guess.
Oh, it has, okay, okay.
So it came with that property when I bought it.
Okay, gotcha. And to clarify, so you're gonna try to, obviously, when you look at the topography there, you've got the retaining wall that's along the sidewalk, and so up towards, nearer to the house is the only spot where you can get a curb clip that goes into that lot.
Correct.
Even get any kind of off-street parking at all, so that's the reason you're doing the, I'm assuming that's the reason you're doing the right-hand turn into the garage?
Yes.
Because you, there's no way you can come in straight off the bench?
No, originally, when I got it approved, they didn't, they didn't want people backing out on the bench, so.
Right.
We kinda drew it to where, we moved it over so where we could actually go into the garage and back out, and the rear of the vehicle would be facing the river, and then you can pull out.
And you can pull out on the bench going forward?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Just straighten it out that much, it's, would be hard for a vehicle to actually make that turn and still have three foot of sidewalk alongside my house there to get up onto the porch.
I, I assume that you would use the, like, a one big garage door instead of two small ones, because you could use then that, that extra width in there for a part of the turning radius to get in?
Yeah, as far as the garage goes, that's way down the road, it's actually just the foundation for it for right now.
For now?
Yeah.
So you're, you're building a parking pad, basically, now?
Pretty much, yeah.
But you want the variance so that you can, you could, if you want to, at some point, build the garage?
Yes, because if I do build a garage, then that's where, I believe that's where the ten-foot setback comes into effect.
Gotcha, okay.
Is the, is that ten-foot setback to the neighbor to the south?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm looking at here, MSA drew four foot four?
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the question, that's not right.
It's ten feet.
No, he's, that, four, four point four should be six feet, that's, he's asking to go from ten to, ten to six.
Yeah.
But the setback is ten?
Well, the, the setback, I don't think, I think it's, my, I think what it is, is it's, it's the separation between buildings. I mean, you can, and I don't think that the, I think it's the building separation that is ten. Let's take a look at that again. I think it's asking decreasing this request, I just wanna make sure. Side setback and minimum building separation, so let me take a look.
Yeah, so I think originally when I had that drawing done, I wasn't planning on putting a garage there.
Gotcha.
Probably like, MSA drew it with the four. But since I'm going to put it in the foundation anyway.
It's a request for a variation, so you. It's a request for a variation, so you could probably amend it slightly and accommodate the, uh, arithmetic.
I gotta find, hold me a second here. My, I don't, I don't have my hands.
Did I hear you say you're going to back into the garage?
No, we, we pulled into the garage, you, you come off a bench and then you.
Head first, head first.
Head first, and then you back out, so that you can actually pull out on the bench.
You, you do a three-point or something to get around.
The, the space between the garage and the house is where.
That's where it's, it's inching me now, so.
Yeah, but I mean, that's where you're, you're basically like a driveway, you'd be between the garage and the pad and your house.
Correct.
And then you'll turn in there and back out. Looks a lot safer anywhere back and, or driving back out on Bench Street, so.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
High density residential, ten feet. Five point five. So I think that, if I'm reading this correctly, that in, in high-density residential, and, and even in medium-density residential, even in, yeah, low-density, the minimum, the least side setback is five feet. Okay, the sum of the setbacks, but, and I, and I have to check, because I, I'm not sure what the exact zoning district is there, but, um, but what it, what it does say is minimum dwelling separation is ten feet. That's, that's what I think we're asking for here in terms of variation, so the, 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 the way side setback works in Galena, you get a, a minimum five, and then you have another one on the other side, it has to be, have something that adds up to, let's say, um, fifteen. You know, the two of them have to add up to fifteen, but the minimum of five. But the buildings are supposed to be separated by at least ten feet. And so what we're saying in this situation, and of course, you go up on Bench Street, and a lot of those buildings are not separated by ten feet, I mean, that's pretty common, some are wall-to-wall, right?
Well, if you look at this one, sits right on the property.
So, so I think the ten, what we're asking for is the, is the building separation of ten feet. So, um, and he's saying he wants to go to six instead of ten.
That's it, part of the problem is the house down from it's right on the property, so.
And I know we're doing more discussion than we're supposed to be doing right now, but.
Any other questions, for next?
Do you follow all that?
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else you want to add, Nick?
Nope, no, I don't have so.
Was there anybody else wanting to speak?
Me.
Oh. Oh.
I know it's odd, but Six Twelve is my house.
Oh, you're down at, you're at the very end, you're the neighbor?
I am the neighbor.
Oh, okay.
Six Eleven, Six Twelve South Bench. So I'm the neighbor house, I'm not for or against, Nick does a very nice job, the house is looking beautiful. I've put a lot of work into my house and still working on it, and I too plan to sell it. So I'm a little concerned about it being that close to the side of the house, but it may not even affect me, so. But looking out my kitchen window, we're going to see the back of the garage.
So I was kind of looking, it looks to me like you, like where that garage would be, though, that you're, you're mostly, that whole face of your house, the north face, has no windows except for that one.
One window at the kitchen.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. So anybody? Can I ask you though?
Sure.
So if it were, if, if for your view out, if it were ten versus six, would you, would you feel is that would, you know, I mean, I know that it has an effect, but it, it's not, it's not like light up against.
Amount, it's, it's probably more lighting and things like that.
Yeah, okay.
The view of the front is gorgeous.
Yeah, and, and that north face of your building is, is, it's basically facing north, right?
Yes.
So you're probably not getting a lot of direct sunlight in that face anyway, right?
Comes in between.
Okay.
But, but wouldn't you have the same issue, say if Nick sold that lot and somebody put a house there?
Yeah.
Which they could.
Well, not if it went, well, he'd have to separate the lots.
Yeah, but I would say he could separate the lots and then sold it, and I built a narrow house in there that's two stories, it's still.
Exactly.
You still have the same issue, okay.
That's a nice font you got there.
Okay, any other questions? Any other comments? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
You have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor, say the five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any carry. All right, I entertain a motion on twenty-five da, or B dash zero six. On the app, Nick and Jessica Timberman request for variance to reduce the side setback and minimum building separation for a new detached garage from ten feet to six feet.
I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion, I, I'll make the motion that we direct Jonathan to draft a positive finding of fact for calendar number twenty-five B dash zero six.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, Jim, you get to read it again.
Yeah, well, I, I just want to say in general, I, you know, Sue's, Sue's points are well-taken, and I think that anything less than six feet would be a little bit onerous, you know, and six feet allows for, appear to be, and I say landscaping guardedly, because, um, you know, in six feet, you can do some stuff, and it's north-facing, so you're not going to get a lot of light, but, you know, there's some things that you can do in there. It would also allow then, even though Sue's house goes right onto the property line, if she ever had to get work done on that north wall by a mason or, or a carpenter or someone, that they would, they would be able to get in there and, and, and do the work, so I think that, that makes sense to me. I also love the fact that we're getting two parking spaces, uh, off Bench Street, um, and where, where we have, you know, enormous parking problems, so yes, we're losing one space, but we're picking up two, so we have a net gain of one, and so Nick, and, and, you know, Nick and his wife have cars, and they will not have to park on Bench anymore, they can park on the street, that means there's one more space available for some, probably some unlucky tourist who wants, has to walk all, drive all the way to the north or the south end of Bench Street, uh, to park, but, um, I think that's a good thing. Um, and so anytime you can get off-street parking on Bench Street, I think it's a benefit, and that's a very difficult lot that the topography suggests that you can only have the entrance up against the house to the north end of that open lot in order to get in, there's, there are really no other way to get up on that lot, uh, because there's a retaining wall. By the time it gets to Sue's house, that retaining wall's got to be four feet high or something, I don't know exactly what it is, but it's too high to, to try to go up, so. Um, so I would say in general, I think it's a, it's a very good idea. So, should I go through the criteria? All right. All right, um, is the, uh, criteria, number one, is the hardship unique to the property and not self-inflicted? I would say, um, uh, it is unique to the property, uh, since everything else is in this town, um, and it is not self-inflicted. Does it confer a special privilege, uh, number two, which is that this is spelled, uh, confer a special privilege, um, that is denied other lands or structures in the same zoning district, it does not. Number three, does the literal interpretation of provisions of the regulations would deprive, um, the owner of the rights commonly enjoy, enjoy by others? It would. Um, is this, uh, is this, um, is it a reasonable use, is the applicant or owner cannot derive a reasonable use of the property lot that requested variance? I think this, um, uh, that is true, that, that, that the variance allows him to have, uh, a reasonable use. Uh, five, is it the minimum necessary? I believe it is. Number six, is it compatible with adjacent properties? I think we demonstrated that it is. Number seven, conformance with the purposes of this code? Uh, it is in conformance, and number eight, conformance with the comprehensive plan? I think it is, definitely, especially when it relates to parking.
Okay, we got, uh, motion and a second to send a positive finding of fact on twenty-five B dash zero six. Would you call the roll, please?
Hank Spiler?
Yes.
Beranski?
Yes.
Spivey?
Yes.
Honey?
Yes.
Rosenbaum?
Yes.
Okay, twenty-five B dash zero seven, public hearing also, owner of, in Galena and the U.S. Grant Museum, request for variance to allow for a backlit wall sign in a residential zoning district at the new location for the history museum. I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say the five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any carry. Okay, I don't know who's coming to, oh, this young lady's coming up. State your name and address for the record, please.
Testa Lot for the Historical Society, five thirteen, Bethelier Street. So we are asking for a variance for a back lighting, um, behind our sign. The sign itself is going to be flush with the new museum building, it's going to be about sixteen feet long by nine inches. The sign itself is going, well, the lighting is going to be very subtle, warm glow, so it's not going to be overwhelming. And right across from us, even though it's in a residential area, is St. Mary's Cemetery, so I don't see us bothering many of the neighbors.
You don't know.
Very true, but, um, all in all, it'll be very subtle, we believe that it'll be more aesthetically appealing than any kind of boost neck lighting would be.
Okay, so that's, go ahead, no.
I just want a clarification, so the, these are not internally lit letters. Okay, these are letters that are behind the, these are, I'm sorry, lights that are behind the letters. So that there's going to be, so this is in a recess.
Yes.
Right, and there's a glow on the, on the recess wall that's behind, which is only nine inches tall, so maybe a little tall. And so the warm glow just comes out from behind the letters, it's not the letters being lit internally, it's just the glow behind the letters, okay?
And that's going to be on the, the Thielier Street side?
Right.
Okay, so there's no signage on the Highway twenty side, or?
No, not at this time.
Will they be lit all the time, or?
We would like them to be lit, um, most likely after hours, when it'll get dark and everything. Um, that's the main purpose, because if we have any kind of evening events or different things, it would be very helpful. Um, but we would like to do it heat around.
So, uh, obviously, uh, the sun, the need for nighttime lighting like that changes, uh, of course, throughout the year, right? In the summertime, you know, it doesn't get dark till eight thirty, nine o'clock, in the wintertime, it gets, it gets dark at, uh, five o'clock, four thirty, five o'clock, you need it. So is it, would it, would it be lit from, let's just say generally, from ten o'clock on, or eleven o'clock on, or would you try to, would it, would it go off in the middle of the night? What, what is your, what is the intention?
We would like to have it on the entire time that it's.
Twenty-four seven.
Whatever start time that may be.
And I noticed that the, it said, I just want to clarify, that it's going to be, uh, the lighting, the light quality with three thousand Kelvin, um, which is a warm, these are three thousand Kelvin, these lights right here, those lights are three thousand Kelvin, so that's the color of the light. So it's a, it's a warmer light.
And the building itself is set back quite a ways, too.
Yeah.
So it would be overwhelming.
But actually, the light itself's going to be going up against the side of the building. It's not like this, like shining out, it's actually shining into the side of the building, so it's not going to be offensive to any houses on Bethelier Street, or the people at St. Michael's.
Any glare going into neighboring houses, it'll just, yeah, be against the wall.
I have more questions.
Any other questions?
No, just a comment, it's not in the historic district ironically for a historic museum.
I know.
So, but that does make it conform to the, for the code and to what we've done before.
Any other, anybody else got anything else? Anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Anybody else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say the five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any carry. Okay. On twenty-five B dash zero seven, Galena and U.S. Grant Museum request variance to allow backlit wall sign in a residential zoning district at the new location for the history museum. I entertain a motion.
Um, I'll move that we direct Jonathan to draft a positive finding of fact for calendar number twenty-five B dash zero seven.
We have a second?
A second.
Yeah, I think, I think this is almost exactly the kind of nighttime signage we'd want, the recessed into the wall with a, 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 a nice warm glow behind the letters, it'll, it'll, it'll be, it won't be, it won't be throwing light on anything. It'll just be, um, highlighting the, the fact that the letters are there, you know, and with the three thousand Kelvin light, which is warm, um, uh, it'll be a soft warm glow, and I think it's appropriate, and I, I agree, and the neighbors across the street are not going to be offended by this. Um, and generally, there on the street, there's just.
What do we do if we get a complaint?
Take it.
Call Digger.
Call Digger.
Call Digger, so you did a bad.
So I, I just, I, I just feel it's, I feel that it, it's, it's appropriate to the architecture of the building, um, which I think is going to be quite nice, uh, and I think that, um, uh, it's, um, uh, you know, it's, it's subtle. And, and it's not offensive, yeah, so I, I'm, 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 I'm okay with it.
You get to read it again.
Okay.
Should have memorized by now.
I should, I don't, you know, it's so funny, because I'm not a big fan of variances. We've had five variances in, in two months. Yeah. Oh, well.
I'm a big fan of porches.
Hey, we're in a, in a town that, you know, we have a lot of weird things going on in this town, so variances are kind of what we have to do. I got it, I got it. Okay, so, um, is the hardship unique to the property and is it, and it's not self-inflicted? Yeah, it is, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that it actually applies, um, so in this case, I'm not sure it's applicable, it's not self-inflicted, that I know. Two, does it confer special privilege that is, uh, not, uh, that has been denied other land structures, that doesn't apply? Numbers, or it, it does not. Um, literal interpretation, uh, the literal interpretation of the regulations would deprive the applicant's, uh, rights commonly enjoyed by others, I think, um, we can say yes, it would. Is it the reasonable use? Yes, is it the minimum necessary? I would say yes. Number six, is it compatible with adjacent properties? I believe it is. Number seven, is it conformance with the purposes of this code? Um, I would say, uh, yes, it is, and number eight, is it conformance with the comprehensive plan? I would argue that it is.
Okay, then, we got a motion and a second on twenty-five B dash zero seven, send a positive finding of fact. Uh, would you call the roll, please?
Beranski?
Yes.
Spivey?
Yes.
Honey?
Yes.
Hank Spiler?
Yes.
Rosenbaum?
Yes.
Now I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the man.
Not hearing any. You have a second? I'll say. All those in favor, say the five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any carry. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, now you can go enjoy the rest of your night.